Welcome to the April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, six thirty P. M. City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Next, citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Next, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must sign a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed on the box on the table.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meetings of February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, five thirty.
Mayor, before you do that, we have put amended minutes at each one of your desks. We found a couple errors in the minutes.
Okay, do we, okay, so can we approve them with the amended? All right, so I still need a motion to approve the amended minutes.
So moved, second.
I haven't get to all the minutes yet.
Oh, okay.
I've got several. Regular City Council meetings of February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, five thirty P. M., March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, five thirty P. M. And this amendment is for which one? Which meeting?
Two fourteen.
Okay, okay, February fourteenth. All right, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes with the amended of February fourteenth?
You have it.
I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Member Cole. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we get started with the meeting tonight, staff would like to withdraw item nine A. And you don't have to vote on it, we're just telling you upfront, if anybody's here for nine A, it won't be heard tonight.
No one seems to be here for nine A. Thank you very much.
On to item six A, which is a Student Advisory Council Annual Report. The two thousand and twenty-three Student Advisory Council Annual Report, including the recommendations and goals for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, will be presented. Additionally, the Student Advisory Council requests that the City Council provide authorization for the Student Advisory Council to meet on as-needed basis during the summer of two thousand and twenty-three to work on the Last Dance video project. With that, all yours.
Hello, Council. The two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Student Advisory Council expresses its appreciation to each and every one of you for your continued support and encouragement. We also express our appreciation to everyone else that has helped us over the course of this year. The two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Student Advisory Council members include, from Astronaut High School, myself, co-chair Savannah Seaver, as the senior representative, member Addison Flake, member Cali Serrato, and member Cooper Mangini. From the Academic Community Enrichment, we would like to thank co-chair Aliyah Dymicki, who is the senior, Vice Chair Edie Pringle, Secretary Julia Moon, and member Julia Curtis. And then from Titusville High School, we would like to thank co-chair Aiden Spur, Senior, and then member Richie Dobbs, member Victoria Hillary, and member Kayden Feiberg. In accordance with Resolution number five, two thousand and twenty-three, the Student Advisory Council is to discuss, research, and prioritize two to four concerns or issues to be presented annually to City Council, with proposed solutions for further discussion and action. The mission of the Student Advisory Council is to encourage involvement of young people and community of theirs and to create an awareness of their rights and responsibilities as citizens of Titusville. This year, the Council held nine regular meetings. During the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, our Council undertook the planning of the following projects for the following term: continuing our production of the Last Dance prom video, and we hosted a mock City Council on March ninth, right here, that you all attended. So thank you all so much. And due to hurricanes, we were unable to host the beach cleanup at Playalinda Beach earlier this year.
That would have been a bad idea.
Yeah. Unideal circumstances.
Exactly, exactly.
The Last Dance prom video. During the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three school year, the Student Advisory Council has been working toward a goal of casting all the roles in our Last Dance prom video. The purpose of this video is to present the ramifications of drinking and driving in a captivating way. This project has been in the making for a few years now, and we are excited to see all of our progress. This year, our accomplishments with this project included holding a total of three casting calls throughout the year and filling the main roles of the video. We are expected to begin filming this summer. We would like to thank Senior Media Specialist Curtis Corwin for all his time and effort that he has volunteered for this project. We are also thankful for members Aliyah Dymicki, Julia Moon, and Julia Curtis for volunteering to come to the casting calls. This project's needs next year will depend on what we can accomplish this summer. And it is recommended that the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three Student Advisory Council continue working on producing the video during the summer on an as-needed basis. Okay, and now for the report on our mock City Council on March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Every year, the Student Advisory Council runs and presides over a leadership event for the Council's participating high schools. This year, we decided to host a mock City Council meeting. Multiple students from Titusville High School, Astronaut High School, and Academic Community Enrichment participated this year and learned what it was like to be a member of the City Council or the city staff. After seeking participants, the Council held a shadow week where the students could meet with their respective city leaders and learn how to conduct their roles in meetings and what their jobs were about. After holding a rehearsal with some feedback from multiple city staff members, we held the mock meeting. The audience and the participants enjoyed the meeting, and it turned out to be a great success. The Council is very excited to host a similar meeting next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well done. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Edie Pringle. I'm vice chairperson of the Student Advisory Council. So earlier this spring, we voted on the goals that we wanted next year's Council to work towards. In collaboration with the National Park Service, the Council will continue to hold its annual beach cleanup at Playalinda Beach this fall. We will continue to work on producing the new The Last Dance prom video for our Drink, Drive, Die campaign project to spread awareness to teens about the consequences of driving under the influence. Filming will start next month and continue over summer with progress continuing into the new school year. The Council will also be holding our biannual youth leadership seminar in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four with professional guest speakers and workshop activities for local high school students to learn the important quality of leadership. Finally, the Council wishes to create and host an elementary school art showcase with Titusville as the theme, as a chance for our youth to show their appreciation for the nature of our beautiful city. As prescribed by the City of Titusville Resolution number five dash two thousand and twenty-three, the Student Advisory Council must discuss and prioritize two to four concerns or issues each year. For this reason, the Student Advisory Council suggests the following goals to be forwarded for the two thousand and twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four Student Advisory Council for their consideration and implementation. Host a beach cleanup at Playalinda Beach. Continue the Drink, Drive, Die campaign project with updating the two thousand and eight Last Dance prom video. Host the youth leadership seminar next spring. And initiate an elementary art showcase event for Titusville's young students. Once again, we wish to thank everyone for their support during the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-two term. We wish the next year's Council much success. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That's awesome. Am I done? Okay. First of all, I want to say, do you guys realize how impressive you are? Obviously, when you ran the meeting and did the meeting, that was very impressive, very disimpressive. And then to come up here and present, I would say that other councils have been very, very good, but I think this was the most impressive, cool, calm, and collected when you step up there. So very impressed with that. So with that, Council, anything you want to say? I'm sure there is. If not, somebody's got to, yeah, there you go. Member Cole first.
Well, what I would like to say is, you know, we always say that what is going to happen to this world, especially when you got an old guy like me looking out? But when I see you come up and the way you represent, we're going to be in good shape. So I really appreciate what you've done. Thank you so very much.
Absolutely. Member Nelson?
I agree with Member Cole, although I'm not as old as him.
You're not nice.
I'm not nice either. But seriously, you guys doing the council presentation and meeting, you were fantastic. And I was just sitting there going, let's turn it over to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tonight would be a good night. But you guys were very impressive. So congratulations.
Anybody else? We good? Again, the word impressive doesn't say it enough, but we are impressed. Call the cards? Thank you very much. Motion?
I move to authorize the SAC to meet on an as-needed basis during the summer of two thousand and twenty-three to work on the Last Dance video project.
I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
Second from Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Awesome. Very much appreciated. Congratulations, and keep up the good work. We're not done with you yet.
On to item six B. Could I have the following students, the three seniors, Adeline Spear? I can't. Aliyah Dymicki? Yep, and Savannah Sever come up, and the mayor will present your scholarships to you.
Okay, City Manager?
On to item six C, which is the Student Advisory Council Membership Appointments for next year. It's recommended that the proposed slate of students be confirmed and appointed to the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Student Advisory Council as selected and appointed by the prospective schools in accordance with Resolution five two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. Any comments on that, Council? If not, then I will, any cards on that? I will just take a motion.
Move to confirm the proposed slate of students as members of the twenty-three, twenty-four Student Advisory Council.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Member Nelson, a second by Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, and with honor and pride it passes. We appreciate those who are here and graduating, and we look forward to working with you in the future. And I would be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to every parent and grandparent who is here and those who couldn't make it. I think they're the first ones who would tell you they're not here if it's not for your efforts and your lifelong commitment, because it is a lifelong commitment. So with that, thank you guys very much. I applaud you. So I know you like all this council stuff. I'm going to tell you, you can go ahead and depart if you wish.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Bright spot in our ear. It really, really is. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Good job there, Stan. Stan? Stan, I just got done telling them it's time to go. All right, City Manager?
Sir, we're to petitions and requests from the public of non-agenda items.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Stan, if you wish to leave at this time. There we are. Joe Lynn, you mean? Yeah, that's right.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty-point Setta Avenue. And I'm going to again announce this injustice that's going on in our area, that we've had numerous ones, and that is no discovery of putting someone in jail, imprisoning, and putting them in prison for over thirty years, was on death row for a number of years. Incredibly unfair. It was on TV forty-eight hours this past Sunday. I don't know if you can probably get it on YouTube, but it's injustice horrible, horrible injustice and racism right here in Brevard County. So that's a horrible thing that I'd like to get him out. I was hopeful that I would have a presentation, video presentation, that I did at the TEC meeting, photos and so forth of the sewage spill. So I sent a request to the City Manager, plenty of time for him to respond, and also to Mr. Thomas. No response, of course, no response. No need to respond to people asking for presentations that have been already approved through the system. He said not approved for submitting to Council. So I just submitted this to our City Clerk's office. It's dated April the twenty-fourth. It says, please contact City Manager and so forth about a number of things. And so for you to call me on this, there's seventeen numbered items. Number seventeen is new. I'll read it to especially Mr. Broome. It says apparent assistance by city's legal staff, especially Broome and fail to facilitate and assist cities dishonesty and violation of laws, or errors in laws, I should say, in regards to many violations of all being a very different mode of operation compared to the previous city attorney Dwight Severs. Now, I made this especially considering SNJ Oaks. SNJ Oaks is just wildly in violation of law, common law, Florida Statute seven oh four and so forth, and no comments from that. And I just don't see that it would have happened that way with Mr. Severs. That's just a big example there. So I think it's going to make longer time. I'm running out of time. I only have about thirty seconds. So this is also numbered here as sewage spills and spraying women and children and so forth, secret sewer mortar torn with the south end of town, failure to respond to emails, lost destroyed FEMA information, city dams, FEMA errors and so forth that are in the flood maps, six large cross strings not considered, citywide boil water alerts and so forth that are not addressed. So this is going to be a sheet that I'm going to use furthermore in this board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager? Wait, stop. Let me say it again. Anybody else with petitions or requests? All right, thank you.
On to consent agenda items. City Council, are there any consent agenda items that you'd like to pull?
I do not.
City Council, are there any questions of staff before we go forward?
Counsel? I see none.
Clerk, do you have any cards for the consent agenda item?
Yes, sir. One individual, three items.
Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Consent agenda item eight A, approved Resolution number thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three, commending outstanding students of North Brevard Area Schools. Consent agenda item eight B, approved single-stream recycling contract. Consent agenda item eight C, authorize the mayor to execute Amendment one for Brevard County Save Our Indian River Lagoon Grant Extension, St. John's Baffle Box Two. Consent agenda item eight D, authorize the mayor to execute Amendment one, Brevard County Save Our Indian River Lagoon Grant Extension, Osprey Nutrient Removal Project. Consent agenda item eight E, approve and appropriate the purchase of two Blower High-Gear Tactical Suits. Consent agenda item eight F, approve change order two to the contract with CDM Smith Incorporated for additional services due to the extension of the project. Consent agenda item eight G, approve USIC Holdings LLC Locating Services LLC of Indianapolis, Indiana, to perform utility locates for the city of Titusville. Consent agenda item eight H, authorize the City Manager to sign the FDOT Non-Motorized Traffic Data Sharing Memorandum of Agreement.
All right. Counsel, anything? Call the card?
Stan Johnston.
I'm a little bit like Mr. Diesel, a risk taker and sometimes a gambling man, especially notable because he's married, and so am I. So that's proof. That's proof enough right there.
That you said, I didn't say that.
So I've had a discussion with my wife, and she says, and all I was saying that I've been recommending is that when you have problems, you should embrace your problems. So she gave me a hug. This Stan? So anyhow, are we on, requesting, no, did I, were we done petition requests? Oh, no, we're on consent order, consent order. I've got it right here.
You're on consent agenda.
Consent agenda. So on eight D, that looks like a water resources issue. And you know, I don't have a lot of good things to say about water resources, although Mr. Cook, I'm very pleased with his performance, incredible performance that he's done for the city and the public. So I've mentioned here that nobody's talking to me about the city's secret sewer mortar at the south end of the city. I think that should be well-known. And the gag orders, I have it as number four, the gag orders on city employees, that's a, I consider that to be a serious matter and to be, especially to be investigated. I think that Mr. Cook is going to run into that very soon. And citywide boil alerts and so forth that Mr. Stauffer has just abandoned, he's told us about, and then he abandoned it. So that's the problem with water resources. I see that on G, we're going to have use of Orlando utilities for locating our utility locates. I hope that works out. I'm concerned about it because we have had a number of times in which our utilities were busted into pretty badly. And do we really know where things are? And that's what some people have approached me with, is that do we know where our utilities are? Certainly on SNJ, it doesn't look like they represented them well. So I am concerned about those three items, and my time is out. And this time, I'm not going to ask for extra time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any council comments? Member Nelson?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
Motion by Member Nelson, second by Member Cole. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City Manager?
On to item nine B, which is antenna ordinance number seven, twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. City Attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to create antenna as an accessory use with limitations, by amending Section twenty-eight dash three forty-two Accessory Use Table and creating Section twenty-eight dash three fifty-one point five antenna, including standards for the use with limitations, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their five April two thousand and twenty-three meeting and recommended approval as presented and requested a exploration of the height limit. The vote was seven zero. The draft ordinance proposes antennas as a new use category in the accessory use table. Section twenty-eight, three forty-two of the code provides a definition and introduces new limitations and performance standards. At the eleven April two thousand and twenty-three meeting, City Council discussed allowing flexibility to encourage antennas to be on existing structures versus having to create a new structure. Flexibility would allow the antennas to possibly exceed the maximum height in certain zoning districts. Based on the discussion, staff was requested to add additional language. Based on the discussion, staff was requested to add additional language to the ordinance. Mr. Parrish is here to present any additional information and answer questions that you may have.
I'll just point out to you on that same cover sheet, section twenty-eight dash three fifty-one five C eight of the draft ordinance now states the following, the top of the antennas and/or antenna array, which may exceed the maximum building height of the zoning district, shall not be more than twenty feet above the approved building height of the primary structure upon which it is affixed or mounted. And then another paragraph here states, no combination of extensions exceeding twenty feet above the approved building height of the primary structure upon which it is affixed or mounted shall be permitted. So that language was added to page four, let me get it to you. Page two oh nine of your packet, it's page five of the ordinance, and we've highlighted it in yellow, and this is in response to your request at your last meeting. So these are the changes that we're proposing in this ordinance. And what this means is that the height of a building is based on the Florida building code, and so it's an average parapet, and then the structure or antenna rather than attached to it is not, is measured from that average based on the Florida building code definition, and not specifically from the very top of a peak of a structure. So it's a, it's a definition that we believe is enforceable, and this is what our responses to you from your last meeting.
Counsel? Vice mayor?
Yes, Brad, I thank you for that. I have that highlighted, and it did because I heard that discussion in planning and zoning as well, and it clears it up, and thank you for that.
And truthfully, my comment was going to be, first of all, is there any summary you need to give? I think you just gave the summary, and I think the clarity with which you gave us is admirable. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Nope, I see, I see none. Cards?
Yes, sir. One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan, you busy?
May I?
You may. Thank you very much. Motion? Vice mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-seven two zero two three antenna ordinance.
Second.
A motion by vice mayor, a second by Member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto nine C, which is ordinance number twenty-eight twenty twenty-three, mobile food vendors, and the city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-eight twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by establishing mobile food dispensing vehicles pursuant to section five oh nine point one zero two Florida statutes, including definitions, exemption from the requirement to obtain a business tax receipt from the city, setting forth purpose and intent, license, location and operational requirements, enforcement and penalty provisions, and by amending section eleven dash three thirty-one definitions, by creating article sixteen, mobile food dispensing vehicles, and amending chapter twenty-eight zoning, by creating section twenty-eight dash one forty-five point one mobile food dispensing vehicle, and amending section twenty-eight dash fifty-four use table, and amending chapter thirty-seven definitions, section thirty-seven dash one definitions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The plan and zoning commission considered this ordinance at their five April twenty twenty-three meeting and recommended approval as presented, seven zero. At the thirteen December twenty twenty-two meeting, city council directed staff to draft amendments to the code of ordinances, chapter eleven licenses and business regulations specifically related to the mobile food vendors to be consistent with the Florida statutes. We did that.
Very well done.
Brad's here to answer any questions that you may have on this ordinance.
I just see it bringing us in line with consistency and lining up with the state and making it more organized. I don't see this one as a whole lot of discussion on it or controversy, but counsel? I don't think they see anything either. Call the card?
They're done.
Oh, wow, very, very well done. Motion, Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, establishing mobile food dispensing vehicles.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto new business, the item is twelve A, which is the F Y twenty twenty-three mid-year budget review and financial update. Through the midpoint of F Y twenty twenty-three, revenues continue to be on track, consistent with the budget expectations, including state shared revenues. Finance will continue to monitor revenues closely and notify city council if any further adjustments are needed. We have a staff presentation to you, and there's several votes that we will be required on this particular presentation that seems to be blinking on that one screen. But with that, Terry Butler and Tom Abatai are here to do the presentation.
I'm ready, just so you know.
That's it.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council. As what happened there.
I don't need to be ready, just go to the PowerPoint anyway.
As city manager stated, this is the mid-year budget review for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Sorry, you want to go ahead and do my slides for me? Our time-tested vision, still relevant today as it was fifteen years ago, is Titusville is a growing and diverse community of hometown neighborhoods built among natural treasures, fostering civic pride, family activities, and community service. Through teamwork and leadership, the city of Titusville provides essential services to improve the quality of life for our community. This should be a familiar slide to council. This is our current F Y twenty twenty-three strategic goals and objectives, five goals and their supporting objectives. Now, this strategic goals and objectives were used to develop our twenty twenty-three budget, and each agenda item is linked to one of these five goals. So as you recall, back in February, we had a community conversation, followed up with a E L T and council meeting in March, where we affirmed the five goals and we added some additional supporting objectives. And this is what the council came up with as far as the overarching guidance for fiscal year twenty-four. So the reason why we're conducting this review is city ordinance requires city manager furnish an in-depth analysis of the budget and the financial condition of the city at the midpoint of each fiscal year, which is March thirty-first. Our longstanding policy is that the finance department monitors the fund level, revenues, and expenditures, and manages to the bottom line. So as of March thirty-first, revenues are on track, and we continue to closely monitor revenues and believe we'll meet our budgeted expectations. So some of the mid-year conclusions, revenues remain on track, departments are managing to the bottom line, staff continues to improve service delivery through organizational realignments, and we'll talk about a big one here in a few moments. We continue to use lean Six Sigma continuous improvement initiatives, and the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget will remain balanced if you approve the proposed budget amendments that Terry Butler's going to walk us through. So for the general fund, fifty percent of the year has lapsed. We're anticipating, at this point, fifty-four million, five hundred and sixty-nine million dollars is the amended budget, and we're at twenty-eight million, fifty-three percent. So at the fifty percent of the year, we're at fifty-three percent of the budget as far as revenue. So revenues are a little bit ahead of schedule. And likewise, our expenditures are at fifty-two percent, also a little bit ahead of schedule, but we're still on track. So as far as revenue, state shared, state shared revenues, we anticipate getting about eight million dollars from the state, and, which means we should be getting around four million right now, but actually, we're a little bit behind because the state revenues come in two to three months time lag. So we're at about three million dollars, but we anticipate making up for it in a lot of part of the year. Let's get the slide. So what we're requesting is at mid-year, we'd like to increase the workforce by one and a half F T E. City clerk needs an additional half of an F T E admin assistant, and that would be making a part-time into a full-time. And Public Works is requesting one F T E to have a new position as a public works manager. So I mentioned that we're doing a rather large reorganization, and it involves the public works. So currently, the public works director has seven different divisions that report to him. And the water resources director has six divisions that reports to him. What the city manager is proposing is that instead of the public works director having seven divisions reporting, he'll have three branches, the engineering branch, the utility branch, and the operations branch, and they have supporting staff under each one of those So, and in order to do that, we're going to be re-titling public works director as the, well, actually, the main is public works director, but the deputy director will become operations director. We're asking for a new position for the public works manager. The water resources director becomes a public works manager, and the water resources deputy director becomes the utility director, and the engineering manager becomes the city engineer. It's a little bit difficult until you look at the wiring diagram, and you'll see those changes being made. So, don't stay on this one. So one of the reasons we're doing this is there's several advantages to unifying both water resources and public works under one organization. First of all, you have a shorter span of control for direct reports for the public works director. It also sets up three senior staff directors to, as far as succession planning. One of the biggest advantages is the force multiplier. Right now, you have water resources and public works, they could at times be working on a project such as a, you know, infrastructure or water main break or whatever, they would rip up the road, go in and complete the repairs, and then repave the road, and not have coordination and have redundancy in services. So now that they'll be able to have a unified workforce that can do the entire project. So there's a lot of synergies there. You know, we also believe that it'll be synergies as far as service workers being cross-trained to do each other's various assignments, and of course, reducing the redundancy, not having two sets of equipment doing the same project. So there's a number of advantages. And, you know, obviously, the one could be considered disadvantage is that the public works director has a much larger, larger organization. However, with the very capable and talented Kevin Cook, I think that's not going to be an issue at all. So we're really excited, put a good plug for Kevin. So moving on. Next. Okay, this is, I'm going to go ahead and turn over the rest of the presentation to Terry Butler, because she can give you more detail, because there's a number of mid-year budget requests, line item requests, that we need to have council take a look at and consider improving so that we can keep the budget on track. So without further ado, Terry.
Good evening, mayor, council. These requests are going to, some of them are going to look familiar, you've seen some in the past. I want to point out the general fund first, that's, of course, our main operating fund. There's a number on here I want to draw your attention to, and it's close to the bottom, it's six oh nine five sixty-five, and that is for railroad construction work. The city doesn't have any control over that. The F E C tells us, scheduled the projects, and they tell us how much it's going to cost, and we just have to make sure we have the money for that. So that's about, between that and the one seventeen on the next page, the one seventeen two hundred is ongoing facility maintenance. Between the two of those, that's about seventy-seven percent of the total general fund requests this year. Under general construction, you'll see a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, that's for the new fire station so that they can continue building that out. I think that we had talked about that before, and you knew that was coming, that cost was coming. Over to the water resources slide, the water and sewer resources. On here, I want to draw your attention to the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar number, that's about fifty-nine percent of the water and sewer resources, their total requests for this year. And as you can see what that is, that's water reclamation equipment and repairs. And then closer to the bottom, on the next slide for them, they have a couple of projects where you see there's a net effect of zero, that's they're watching their projects and reallocating funds between a couple of projects so that they can make the best of what they have in their budget. Then, of course, we have I T has a couple of requests in there. On the next page, you'll see that this is the breakdown, the general fund request, the water sewer request, and on all the other funds kind of combined, it is two point one million dollars this year. I don't think that's unreasonable considering where the environment is with costs. I think they're still managing their budgets very well, and some of these items are out of their control. So I think it's a good thing that they're asking for them now, and we won't be caught off guard later. The next slide is a fairly new slide, I don't know if you've seen one of these before. This is the general fund and what we call the fund balances within the general fund. The G A S B makes us designate certain balances in the general fund so that it's very transparent what is, is held up in the total general fund balance. I want to draw your focus to the number towards the middle at the seven million dollars, that is the committed fund balance, that is your stabilization reserve fund, that went up just about one point one million dollars over last year, that is sixty days of operating expenditures budgeted in the general fund. So as costs go up, you're going to see that number go up a little bit, costs goes down, you'll see that number go down a little bit. It's very healthy, I love that you have that reserve policy, that is what would always protect us should something catastrophic happen here. The other number I want to point out is the number all the way to the bottom, it's three point four million dollars, that number is what the increase was over the prior year. I wasn't exactly sure where that number would fall out this year, I'm very pleased to say that the general fund did very well, and so I'm happy to see that, that we have those balances. On the water and sewer fund balance side, this is set up a little bit differently because it operates more like a business. I want to point out one number on here, it's the operating income, you had a positive operating income of three point six million dollars, that was, that was a very good move for this year considering costs for construction had really escalated during the year. And then the other number on this slide is the unrestricted fund balance at the very bottom, it's just shy of twenty-three million dollars, extremely healthy fund balance in the water and sewer fund as well. So as we move on then, we have, as of, this is the mid-year update, so March thirty-first, you know that we've had fifty percent of the budget lapped, last lapped.
Got it.
Yeah, say that three times fast. All of the directors are doing quite well at managing their bottom line budget, so I'm, I'm very pleased with that. And it shows to you that the, the city is doing well, and the city manager budgeted appropriately so that everybody can stay within their budgets. The next slide is where we're going to ask for your vote. So there's a couple of things here that are vote and a couple of things that are acknowledgement, I'm just going to go ahead and read them for the record. We'd like for you to affirm the F Y twenty twenty-four strategic plan that was changed recently at your last strategic plan meeting. We'd like for you to acknowledge the city manager's public works water resources reorganization. The next item is an actual vote that we would need to approve the mid-year budget amendments that we discussed earlier. And the fourth item is to authorize the increase of one point five new F T Es for public works in the city clerk's office. Any motion?
And I'll take it from here, just as we're moving forward, we are in the, the middle of the F Y twenty-four build as well, so the first staff review will begin shortly. So what I'd like to do is go through our management priorities so that you are aware of what the, the staff is building their budgets on, okay? So with that, the, we're continuing to use lean Six Sigma, and we have several projects that are underway. We will come back to council with an update on the projects and what, what we've seen, we kind of got off track with that during COVID, but we're going to start bringing those back to you. We want to allocate resources to align with F Y twenty-four strategic goals and objectives that you set today, continue to pursue economic development opportunities through prudent use of abhorrent and other economic developments incentives. We're committed to making sure our employees get the training that they need, and here's the ones that. And here's the ones that you really need to be aware of. We are building this budget at a 6.0 cost of living adjustment. Based on where CPI is now, that may come down a little bit, which will give more flexibility for more projects. But we wanted to shoot, when we started this budget build, at 6, because right now CPI is at 6.6, but it is working its way back down. The second thing I'd like to bring up to you is our operating cost, as Teri has said, is up quite a bit. So we are building this budget with a 10% increase in operations. We built this current budget at 8%, so 10% increase will be, it's a pretty substantial increase. And then we're, because we work in a five-year cycle, we will build the subsequent budgets at 8% operating increases. Hopefully, that inflation will come back down into check. We are focusing on staffing levels. As you know, we hired nine additional firefighters as a result of the SAFER grant. We're now running four firefighters on all the trucks as we prepare to get the new Southside Fire Station built. And we'll go back to three and then have a fifth fire station built, an operational. But we are needing to adjust different staffing levels. Community development, you got to see how their task and to staff ratio is kind of out of whack right now. We have some shortages, so I can't hire just to get my staff up to 100% yet. So we may be, as part of that budget build of community development, if FY 24 needs additional staff, we may be asking council to do that. We are, we're keeping the emergency fund and stabilization reserves at the current levels as direct advice to council, and we're going to continue to address OPEB as we, as we move forward. And I think the economy has helped our OPEB liability go down a little bit, as, but it's kind of, it's still a pretty large number. And this last one, I think, is very important for council. We encourage managed growth through the use of low-impact development principles as a mean of, means of developing an attractive built environment while protecting and conserving our natural resources. So that, this is the budget bill. Like I said, we'll have the city manager's proposed budget ready for you at the end of July. Your first budget workshop's on 16 August, and then the two subsequent public hearings are there. So, Teri, if I could have you go back to slide 28.
28. We're at it.
Subject to your questions, this is what we would like council to do as part of your discussion.
Once it's discussed and cards are called, we can take this with one, one vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You can. I don't know if there's a specific reason that finance would want them broken up, but you could do it in one motion.
Sounds very good. Counsel comments on the budget. First of all, thank you for the clarity. We're, I think we're always pretty aware of these things. Staff does a good job of keeping us aware. That doesn't mean that I can call out the numbers like that, but when we sit at something like this, I really, one of the big deals for me is having that reserve fund for the 60-day emergency. Lord knows, we've seen enough, and we've been blessed that it hasn't knocked us off our horse, but it could be one, I mean, God forbid, but if you're over there in, what is Bradenton, you better have some reserve. And I mean, I'm very seriously, it's one of those things that before you get into this, you don't even know about a city having a reserve. And I can tell you that when we speak to some of our advisors, we are way ahead of the curve. Some cities are lucky to have 10 to 15 days' reserve. I think the average is around 30. We're at 60. So I'm very pleased with that, and I can't say enough about the effort I see going into this, and it goes back even previous generations. So, Member Stokel.
Yep, I was just going to echo that. I always appreciate us building a very conservative budget, and then hopefully, we can allow for additional requests. I did have one question on the reorg, because I always like to see that and see new ideas. I know we said we were adding one new person, but I didn't see it in the budget request. Does that mean that we, by moving the positions, we aren't actually needing additional funds?
We have sufficient funds.
That's even better. That's what I was thinking. I was like, man, this is really nice. So I appreciate that. I did, the Public Works Manager, is that going to be directly under Kevin, I'm guessing? Or I couldn't see where it was on there.
Well, there, what slide is that? So I can see it here, because I can't read any of that.
It is slide 20, no, maybe. 17.
17?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was just curious where that new position would fall on this.
Yeah, the new position is going to be in the Operations Branch. It will, it will be a new layer of management that will bridge the gap between the director in that branch and the two or more divisions, so.
Okay, because there's so many different divisions in that one.
So for instance, it'll bridge gaps between fleet maintenance and solid waste, or stormwater in streets. You'll see more in the 24 proposed budget coming in to kind of shore up what would be eight subordinates to a director. So, and then the other one that's, the revision of the Water Resource Director is going in the Utility Branch for a similar setup.
Okay.
To bridge gaps between the director and multiple divisions.
And it seems like this will allow for more collaboration, is what I'm seeing, so it's exciting to think about.
And like Tom had said, and Kevin's executed now, is there's cross-training between streets and stormwater and field operations, and it's similar equipment. It's, you know, dig up, find a pipe, fix a pipe, fix a road. So it's exciting to see them getting to do different work. You know, a guy that's been working on stormwater now gets to go patch roads for a while to learn the cross-training. It also helps us with the callouts, so we're not keeping the same few people on callouts for field operations.
Yep. Well, I appreciate, I know this was a lot of hard work and a lot of thought went into this, so thank you for the update.
It's clearly a 365-day-a-year effort. I mean, it really is. You guys are constantly working. And I said, really, starting back when I got out here in 16, I, I sense that you all are always city manager to lead the way, I'm sure. You're always ahead of the curve. We got a 60-day emergency fund because you're ahead of the curve. You're, you're what if? You don't want to get caught? You got it, without having the reserve. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, and tell me how this matches. I know that you have some union activity.
We have the Service Worker Union, which is LIUNA, and they, they are throughout this organization.
Okay. So this is all blends together and doesn't?
That's correct.
Anything else, counsel? Call card?
Stan Johnston, I have concerns about this Sheet 17, the organization. It has the separation of the water reclamation and water production from the water and sewer field operations. That seems kind of, doesn't, it seems like it's, doesn't fit. Notice on that Sheet 17, that they should be under different areas, under the three different areas. I know somebody doesn't want to put it up there, but that's it. And let me give an example of, what we had is that we had, I think you remember Joyce Smalnick, something like that, at corner Beatrice and Sherry, and her yard and so forth had sewer in it, and the corner was sewer and so forth, is this recent source bill. But also, she asked me to call in about this water leak that she's reported repeatedly for two and a half years, two and a half years. So how in the world are we having a water leak not fixed for two and a half years? I think we should look into that, because that seems like it really shows something's wrong somewhere, wrong, big time. I don't understand why, why we would take two and a half years to, water coming up out of the ground and not fixing it. So we've got problems, and I think that I was looking for the water reclamation project and how it's going as far as money going, because we were given like, oh, maybe 10, 11, 12 million dollars for that, and I'm not sure if that's reported in this thing, the water reclamation, the re, the upgrading of that, is that in there? I'd like to know to answer that question. Maybe you won't answer that. I don't know if you answer any questions. So my concern is avoiding, avoiding questions and the sewage spill that we have. And when I was talking about Joyce there, I'm talking about the sewage spill that was over top of the sewage, the water leak. And also, it was, went to Greenwood Street, and had a big pond there, darkened sewage, and the city denies it. So we've got a problem, and I told you about we have a problem of gag orders and dishonesty. It's a big deal. And I think you should, this is the time to respond to it, because somebody's going to have to respond to it sometime. How long can this go on about just denying things that we got videotapes of? We got videotapes of the sewage spill, not just photos. We got all kinds of witnesses who lived there. So I think that you guys need to be concerned, because Mr. Stauffer's gone, and we can't blame it on Mr. Stauffer anymore. And Kevin Cook has got a big load on his shoulders, and I'm worried about him. So you guys are in my prayers. You too, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any cards? I see none. Counsel, Member Nelson.
Move to affirm financial year 2024 strategic plan. Acknowledge the city manager's public works-water resources reorganization. Approve the mid-year budgetary change request and authorize 1.5 new full-time employees.
Second.
Have the motion from Member Nelson, and the second from Member Cole. I'm good. City Attorney? Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City Manager.
Onto Item 12B, which is the adoption of the 2023 Sustainability Action Plan. Staff recommends you adopt the 2023 Sustainability Action Plan.
Okay. Brad, any little report or summary for us, or no, just questions?
Just try to answer any questions you have.
And I would say, while I have the moment, I feel like you always do a good job, but tonight in particular, you really summarized some things for me that, and answered some things clearly that I appreciate. So with that, we move to Sustainability Plan. Do I have any questions? I see none. Call card?
Stan Johnston.
You could wander on this, and it could affect any sustainability. You could talk about your electric cars and sustainability.
Stan Johnston, 860 Sunset Avenue. And so I have, I'm giving you a handout that I prepared, and I sent you an email. This is an email that I sent you today, and it's titled, "My Objection to this Sustainability Action Plan That Minimizes and Ignores Matters Exposed on Appendix E." Now, first, what I want to say is that I'm really pleased that what Mrs. Mueller did, because she did some things that were very good, and she left in Appendix E a number of items that the city is not addressing, big-time items. And it includes, like the sewage spills. It includes the spraying of women and children and babies and so forth with sewer. It includes the secret sewer meritorium. I'm reading what it says on this email to you. It excludes your failure to respond to questions, like you just avoided the question I asked you today. I asked about the, the money that's being spent on reclaim. No answers, no response. In other words, city council didn't have to do anything. Staff didn't have to do anything. They don't have to answer any questions. I asked about the two and a half years. No response. You guys nuts? I mean, I thought you guys were supposed to be here representing the public, and we got all kinds of problems. And the gag orders, the sewage spills that are videotaped and not recognized by the city, it's crazy. So you guys, I'm praying for you guys, because this is big time. This is terrible. We've got, I've quoted to you 838.022 Florida statutes, felony, felony to file a false report? You guys are real comfortable about that. But I don't know how comfortable you can be, how long you can do it. And I talk about the city-wide boil water alerts, that people are punished on that, and nobody's responding to it. And when I come here, I ask for somebody to get you, to get me a PE to dispute my findings, and you don't do it. Well, this is, this is also a copy to the attorney of the boy who's allegedly paralyzed. So you guys are, you're on the hotline, and you're in my prayers, but I don't see that you're doing things right. And this has to do with sustainability. So I've enlisted numerous things on here and pages of your sustainability on your agenda, 415, 416, 418, and 419. Numerous things that at least are mentioned, and it includes the resilient plan that was, that I, that was botched, the last resilient plan that was botched. And I made a complaint to Human Resources, and it got nowhere. So I wish you luck, and that's maybe what you need in prayers, because someday, something may happen in addition to, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
You're welcome.
Member Nelson?
I would like to move to approve or adopt the Sustainability Action Plan.
Got the motion by Member Nelson, and second by Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City Manager.
Onto Park and Open Space Draft Definitions and Standards. This one goes backwards. On 26 February 2019, council expressed concerns with park and open space definitions and standards. Council members requested that staff improve and clarify the code definitions and requirements, such as defining open space, parks and neighborhoods, and size requirements. Staff will present a report on the status of the proposed changes to parks and open space definitions and standards. Specific proposals include, but are not limited to, defining parks and open space as usable common areas detailing specific amenities and limiting stormwater and parking facilities from inclusion in minimum park and open space requirements. Brad's got a presentation for you, and we're looking to make sure that we're on track with what council directed a few years ago.
Very good. Thank you.
So several years ago, this was not a formal advisability. This was actually a reaction to a particular project that was brought before you, where there was a planned development rezoning, and there's a minimum open space requirement of 35%. And there are a lot of concerns by council at that time about what they were, the applicant was counting towards that minimum open space. Since that date, we took the concerns from the council, and this is an excerpt of what was stated at that meeting. Basically, the council requested improving and clarifying the code definitions and requirements of open space, such as defining open space, parks and neighborhoods, and size requirements, and et cetera. And so the conclusion from the council at the time was that the open space definitions were just not well-defined, and we just need to provide some more clarity. Staff looked at that, and off and on, we kept trying to put it on a back burner, because there were other things that had more priority. So this has been back and forth, a long project. We've come back into several versions of this. What we need from you is more direction, I think, of make sure that we're going down the right path, because as we looked at this, to try and figure out, coming up with some new definitions and clarifying some requirements for the different, open space requirements of the different types of development we allow in our city, it felt like we were pulling the yarn of a ball of yarn, and it was just coming undone, and there's a lot of pieces to this. So I'm just going to go through briefly what we think you were looking for, and it may be too broad or too, too much, and so you may ask us to rein it in a little bit. So the code right now, just to give you some context, there are various definitions in the code for different development types. Remember, there is one particular tool called planned development rezoning, and there's minimum open space requirements for that. That's only one tool that we have that allows someone to be able to develop on a piece of property. We also have another tool called planned industrial development that also requires a master plan, if you create a new zoning district called PID. We have regional mixed use, which I believe all of you are very familiar with now. We also have the downtown mixed use, which has its own specific open space or civic space requirements, which are unique to the downtown mixed-use zoning district. We also have the urban village zoning district, which has its own specific open space requirement. If you remember, the most recent urban village development, or most recent development, they had to go through that urban village zoning. Included a master plan, that was the Titusville Resort and Destination by Mr. Jesse Kirk, Wright, rather, and that required a And that required a 20% open space, but that's a different type of open space than you would typically see in a planned development zoning. It was more urbanized civic type open space. And then you have open space requirements for other tools that we allow in our code called cluster and conservation subdivisions. And those are subdivisions that allow someone to be able to utilize the density yield that might be allowed in a zoning district, but can create any size lot they want. So they can create really small lots and cluster those lots in certain areas, thereby preserving a lot of open space. So there are different open space requirements in each one of these development types. A planned development, for instance, states common open space includes both passive recreation, examples of picnic areas or walking trails. That's what it says specifically. And active recreation, examples are playgrounds or basketball courts. Private water bodies and stormwater retention or detention areas are designed to be used for passive recreation. For example, fountains, benches, and walkways. So if you just put a bench or a walkway and a pond or a retention area, whatever the size of that retention area conceivably could be counted towards that open space requirement. That was one of the objections that council had at that time in 2019 with that example project. Let's see. Certain zoning districts right now do not have a minimum open space requirement at all. So for example, if a property has an R1B zoning on it or an R3 multifamily zoning district, there's no minimum open space, period. So we looked at that and thought, is this something that council wants us to address? And it's possible you may imply that that's not something you want us to address. You may ask us to only address only the planned and development zoning district specifically, or maybe some of the other tools that I just mentioned. CC zoning district, Community Commercial Zoning District, for example, does not have a minimum open space or a minimum civic space like you find in the downtown zoning district. We had proposed a few definitions and I'll show you a matrix real quick, or a clip of a matrix that we'd come up with. Parks and open space should be usable common open space. That's one of the definitions we're proposing in here. Parks and open space should include amenities and we kind of give some more description of what those are. I defined the different types of open space in parks and recreation areas. Passive parks and open space are essentially unimproved and set aside. So that's one type of definition we threw in here. The current standards for those specific development types that I just mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. We're not proposing changing the minimum open space requirements for a planned development or for a PID or for conservation or for RMU zoning. We're just proposing changing the definitions of what's required in there, not the actual size. So for example, a planned development zoning, someone wants to use that tool. We're not proposing increasing the open space minimum requirement or decreasing it. Some exemptions we're proposing. By expanding where open space might be required in some of our standard zoning districts, there were some exemptions that we're proposing here, such as if you have a residential subdivision that's located within a quarter mile of an existing park, there's no open space requirement. And also if it's defined as an infill development, that we would not require an open space requirement because that would be a burden. Some proposed standards that we threw into our draft ordinance may count up to, we may count up to 50% of a natural water body or a proposed stormwater system to count towards open space. So right now in the planned development zoning district, if you just put in a fountain or a park bench or trail around it, you can conceivably include the entire water body, whether that's a natural water body that's here as open space or that stormwater facility, regardless of the acreage. And then they'll just have to negotiate with council through the public hearing process as to whether that's a good idea or not. Well, we're putting a standard in here that you can count up to 50%, provided you provide, you include some amenities. Parking areas would not count as open space. So parking lots inside parks and open space would not count towards that minimum open space requirement. And buffers and landscape islands may count as open space. So some tools allow buffers to count towards open space and some do not. We believe that they should count towards it. When we did this exercise, first started this exercise, we tried to figure out, okay, so we have parks, we have open space. One is passive, one is active. How do we define that? Well, you know, a playground can be identified in an open space area and it can also be located in a park that's active. Or a park can be defined as something passive. So we were having a real difficulty trying to come up with maybe even a matrix of saying, well, if you do a park, you have to have these number of benches, this number of feet away from each other, and so on and so on. That was getting very detailed and specific and very regulatory. And so this illustration is just to try to point out to you that when you try to define what is active, and typically something active would be a civic space, urban plaza, four courts and courtyards in urban areas. But they can include clubhouses, pools, tennis courts, basketball courts, soccer fields, playgrounds, tot lots, and dog parks. They could also include stormwater ponds. They could also include trails and linear parks. So just because there's a linear park in one area doesn't necessarily mean it's passive or active. So it's very difficult to really define that. So we came up with some categories, so I'll explain what I mean in a moment. Passive recreation. You can typically define that as natural areas, wetlands, habitat areas, conservation areas, lakes, ponds. Those ponds could also be in urban areas. Green belts. Natural areas or passive areas could also include playgrounds, tot lots, and dog parks or trails. So again, it's very difficult to really make a fine distinction between the two. So I don't expect you to read this, but this is a matrix that we came up with that illustrates what we want to eventually propose to you. And the matrix includes a list of types of parks and open space. An example would be a natural area, a picture of one, a description of what that is, and minimum design and operating standards to it. Another one would be a playground, the minimum size of it, what is defined, and minimum design standards of it. And so we all slew these types of parks and open space types with definitions and some standards in them. And then we were going to propose in the ordinance that an applicant who's using any particular type of development tool could utilize one of these and propose these inside their plan and identify what they are. As long as it all cumulatively meets the minimum, whatever that is, open space inside that development tool. So this is just an excerpt of what we want to propose to you. And we want to ask you if you think that this is a good approach or not. You could ask us to maybe, I can bring back to you this matrix and show you the full matrix. And maybe that's all, that's what's acceptable to you and just have that as part of our tool inside our code. But we also have very other standards, which I've already briefly described, such as you can count only 50% of your stormwater area as a standard inside of code. So we could include, show you the full draft. And then you can choose from that what you think is most appropriate. But when we first started this exercise, this is where we really started, was this matrix and a list of open space and park types. We also included at the end of the draft ordinance, a dedication and phasing schedule. So for example, the code says that there are existing dedication options. You can dedicate an open space or a park area to the city if the city is willing to accept it. You could put it and preserve it as, through an HOA as part of a subdivision and be managed by a nonprofit organization. Or it could be developer owned, like multifamily development will have a minimum open space area, but that's going to be privately owned park for that use of the residents there. We also included, in addition to what's existing, this new phasing language that, for example, a subdivision that was going to be phased, they would have a minimum open space requirement, for example, in a planned development zoning. But as each portion or phase of that subdivision's coming in, they would have to provide the park and open space requirement as they keep doing each phase. So it's kind of a tool to make sure that there's some portion of open space being created as each phase is coming in, as opposed to all of it coming in at the end, which can take several years for some subdivisions. That concludes my presentation. I'll try and answer any questions you have. I'm sure you're gonna have a lot of debate about this and I've certainly come back to you with some more information if you like.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. Brad, very good. And I hate to bring up horror stories because there has been a few in dealing with this open space issue. We have, we have talked about over, over the past of how much of the storm drain, rain off water can, the pond, storm pond can be counted 50%. We've had that issue. We've had developers come in and after a fact, they want to change that process. I know that we made some, a couple of weeks ago, when we went through some things with tranquility. Part of the issues was an open space issue, whether you could combine this or combine that. Beautiful job and, you know, that time of morning trying to come up with those kind of answers. But again, my concern that it is, it's going to be difficult, as you have stated, to give you some specific directions on this because it's almost every piece of where we have gotten to this point with development in our area, in our city. We're, we're running out of space and we're gonna have to, even if we change it now or make something specific now because of the availability of land to build upon, it's going to, it's going to be some changing the way we look at things because of how much space we have available. For instance, 50% of a stormwater pond can be classified as open space. You said also that parking can be classified as open space. Is that also included in the industrial arena as well?
Well, for parking, we were going to propose that it would not count towards open space. So it's not consistent with each development type.
Okay.
So we were going to propose a consistent statement, a standard in there. So it would not count.
So because I had, I thought I heard you say you wanted to include it. Okay, so that clears one thing. We don't want to, we don't want to. How hard fast are we on including, can we go up on that stormwater pond to a greater percentage because of putting benches around the park? I mean, you know, water fountain and a park bench. Can we go from 50%, maximum 50% or maybe 60%? Would that help out?
Yes, sir. I mean, the whole intent of what we were proposing to you, what we want to propose to you are standards to not leave so much open for negotiation.
Right, right.
So of course, we can, if you decide to do, propose a different standard, we can include that.
See, because if that, if we did that, maybe that will cut down on some of the future fighting that we may have to go through or that we are, we said that we have conceded to go to a maximum of 60% and we're not going any further than that and that is then be a standard rule. That's what I would put on that particular issue as far as. Because stormwater ponds and being included in open space, I think that that's going to come up more in the future than it has in the past because of the, of us running out of space to build. It's going, you're gonna have to do some things like that. My thoughts.
Member Cole?
I like the depiction that you had up on the metrics. I think that it would help the developers understand. I kind of disagree with Vice Mayor Robinson on the fact that if we're running out of space, we need, I think we ought to stick to the open space and if they can't do the open space, then so be it. I don't think we need to, you know, reduce our open spaces in there just because we're running out of land. But I like the way you showed it with the metrics. I think it would be easier for the developers to understand. And, you know, as long as they know upfront what we're looking for. I don't think they can come back and argue all they want to, but that's the standard that we have.
Member Nelson?
So I wanted to address the parks and open space in part because of Jesse Wright's proposal. And especially when he came in and said he wanted to count the rooftop of the hotel as open space. And I thought.
It's open space up there, isn't it?
And then he wanted, I know, I was like, you gotta be kidding. And then he wanted to count all the buffers around the development as open space because he put a bench on it. And I was like, you know, why are we even asking for open space at that point? So to me, the idea of open space and recreation is so that if we have a single family subdivision or we have a multifamily apartment complex that rather than have all these people get in cars and drive someplace, there's someplace there for their, them to take their kids and take their dogs, walk with their spouses. So they're not getting in a car and driving all over the place. So I would like to see it included in the single family subdivision and the multifamily apartments. I don't mind landscape islands, but the buffers, I'm like, we're gonna make that, you know, that 10 feet that borders US 1? Because we all want to, you know, go sit on that bench he's gonna put on US 1? No, that's, to me, that's not really open space. So, and I like the proposed exemptions. But I think that's what, from my perspective, that was what I was trying to accomplish so that we didn't have to have the discussion on the hotel roof is not open space. That these people in either the multifamily units or the subdivision had a place to take their kids and do those kind of activities. So that's my thought.
Good words. Member Stokel?
Yep. My thoughts are somewhat similar, I think, to what everyone else is saying. I think that the fact that we're here, I just think back of how like subdivisions were built before and maybe we weren't as clear because they were developing them with larger setbacks and there was more green space. Now it seems that development is almost as if how much can I fit into the smallest piece of land possible? And because of that, I think that we are finding ourselves in these situations where it was okay to be a little bit unclear because it wasn't that much of a concern. But now it's how much can I really squeeze and fit this for my, my design? And so I think the more that, not everyone necessarily has to agree with us, but the more clear we can be, at least a developer can come and say, this is what Titusville's rules are. It's very clear, do I want to build there or do I not? And then they know that. So as much as we can give them what we're looking for, I'm all in favor of. So thank you for providing that matrix. And again, I think Vice Mayor brought up, you know, there was some confusion and people are not, are trying to change definitions or it's their interpretation, which is fine. But the more that we can say, you know, this is our vision, this is what we're looking for, I think the better. So I appreciate the work that you're doing on this.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. Brad, are buffers included in the open space?
Some of the development tools do allow for buffers to count towards open space. However, I'll give you an example. One says it can count towards open space, but yet the definition says it must be usable. So it's almost. So are you allowed to put a trail in it then, in this 20-foot buffer requirement? But yet there's another section that says you're not supposed to put anything there unless you get a waiver. So it just seems like it needs to, these kind of conflicts need to be cleared up.
Yeah, we need some good clarity on the buffers because if you're using it as a buffer, that's the purpose of it, is the buffer, not to be used for anything else. You know, I don't know.
Well, I'd like to ask, are you, is the council okay with counting buffers as open space in some certain situations?
I'm not.
Okay.
And I've been listening to council and as Member Stokel said, I'm agreeing with everything that's being set up here. And I'm trying to hear everything to get exactly what we're trying to accomplish on this particular item on the agenda. But to that point, no, I think everybody's just. But to that point, no, I think everybody's just kind of a no. I mean, a buffer is a buffer. That's why it's a buffer. And you want to put a little open space next to the buffer, now you got open space. But and I can, and I guess we're trying to clarify that confusion. So I guess now, and I've heard everybody speak and I think we're, we're similar. We all appreciate your attempt to clear this up more. And the city manager said, well, we started, it's been a long road. And we're still trying to clear it up. What is exactly we're trying to do here tonight?
If, if you'd like, I can bring back the draft ordinance that we initially created. And if it is too far for what you, if you're not comfortable with it, we have another version that we can bring back to you that's less aggressive, I guess.
So at this point, we're not looking to approve this or approve that or we're looking to give you feedback on. We'd like to see perhaps what you just stated. Because again, I'm, I'm hearing still some questions, again, about the buffer and then the parking. And I did hear you say the parking is not. But I'm just saying there's still some, some clarity coming and you're clearing it up with every, every time you come forward. I think that that might be the best thing to do for you to bring. What did you just say? You have a?
We have an initial draft that we can show you just for informational purposes and so you can understand where we're going with this. And then I think from that point, you'll see, you'll probably want to rein back a little bit based on what we give you. So we can bring that back to you.
Sounds like one of those where you see on the PowerPoint, the next step. And we've seen that a few times. And I think that would be the next step.
So, so if I could just follow on what Member Cole had said. That, that matrix that Brad's team has prepared, to me, really clarifies of how. So you have this and then you can do this. And this gives you credit for that. As for some of the definitions inside of that, I, I think that that's what we'll look at after we provide you that forum, that format that we're proposing within that ordinance.
And which is why my question was, what do we want? But I'm hearing like the, the buffer question. I mean, that's certainly, it's not something, you know, we want to vote on this or that. And I think that clarity has to be in there. But yeah, I agree. The matrix is, like I said, it's getting clearer and clearer every time you come forward and put something out there. The matrix may be the biggest clarity I've seen. But you know, so, so I'm pleased with where it's at and I can go any direction we need to go. At this point, I kind of like what you're saying, Brad. You can bring us the next step and, and go with that with the matrix.
So what we'll do is we'll, you, you have provided us advisability to bring you something back.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's what I, kind of where I'm at. Because I wasn't sure if we're going to have to vote or not. I'm okay if we do. I don't see it though. I don't, I see what Brad is saying is I've, you know, I think that he wants to bring us the next step. And, and that would give us even more clarity from the matrix. Are we good?
Yes. Yeah, this will help. We, the main reason we brought this to you is because we want to make sure we weren't going too far. And so it gets you comfortable with us presenting this draft. We'll bring this back to you so you can take a look at it.
The only thing I want to just make sure that we do everything that we can to the buffers and open space.
Yeah, no, no. I think that everybody said no on that. But I'm glad you asked that because that was clear that that's the kind of thing that needs to be clear. And, and I think, you know, he, he's making that clear. But at this point, it was our buffers part of it. And he's in some cases, he said yes, some cases no. I think that we all agree that buffers really shouldn't be part of open space. Say again? Wait, no, wait. Don't say that to Brad. Brad, I think is much clearer than that. It's certainly clearer now than what we started a long, long time ago.
So I, I'm not sure. Clerk, do you have any cards to?
Technically, we don't have to call them. But?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston.
Just so you know, we didn't vote, so I'm, I'm letting you come up here. We're not voting.
Well, I think you ought to consider something else. I mean, you ought to spend a lot of time on this, this definition.
A lot of clarity, a lot of.
Because definitions are important. Like right now, is there's a definition of something, you don't want to talk about it. With sewage bill, I mean, we got videos and stuff like that and all kinds of.
But that's not open space.
It's not open space.
We're talking about open space here.
But what the city has done is that, I'm not sure, in the last several years or so is that we've rezoned administratively properties to be R three. We've increased the density. And under Peggy Bousaka, we have increased the density of a number of areas. So don't be surprised that we lose our open space. Don't be surprised. I'm sorry. And what you're doing is you're begging for high rises. That's what, what are we going to do? Little Miami? So the decisions that you're making is going to influence the food future. And it's not just defining open space to get some open space. But when you force people to have more intensity on the properties, you force it. You force the loss of open space. So I'm, I'm, I'm brokenhearted about this. For example, SNJ Oaks, they went and, for example, this is what happened here. Is that they begged for variances this way, that way from, and buffers disappeared and just all kinds of variances. And they got out there, so they had a wooded place, three acres. Almost two acres of it was, was, well, over two acres was wooded. And they call it SNJ Oaks. You know how many trees they have left there now? One. One tree. I don't know what they have. They have hundreds of trees there. One tree left. They call it SNJ Oaks. It is an oak tree. But it's, they took down the big ones and the big pines and everything else. And so I don't see, I don't see a recreation area for them, even though they had three acres. So we, we guess we get what we ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else on that? Nope. City Manager.
We are to mayor's report and council reports.
Let me just say petitions or requests, second time there. I see none. Mayor's report, I will pass or defer right now. And I will go, I think I've been going that way first. So let's start with Herman.
I'm good.
All right. Member Nelson.
So do you guys want to hear about St. John's Water Management? St. John's?
Hear about them every day, actually.
I did meet with him, with Sandy, and learned a lot about wetland mitigation banks. We actually have one in the county. And it is a partnership between the city of Melbourne and a private enterprise. It's about twelve hundred acres. I understand their budget is huge. But they were saying that the mitigation banks are anywhere from a hundred acres to like twenty thousand acres. So our particular area is Area 21. And it looks like it wasn't totally defined on the map. But it looks like it goes from ninety-five east and it includes the Space Center. And my understanding is the Space Center is using up the mitigation credits as fast as they can grab them. And there are no mitigation credits available in our area. And as a result, they now sell for three hundred thousand for each credit. So it would be, it would be cool to have that here. I don't know that we can do it because I'm not sure that we have the area to do it. And also it looks like it's pretty pricey. And I think Scott sent all of us the budget from Lake Washington this afternoon.
Well, I think equally important of what we sent is the, the level of detail to do a mitigation bank.
Yeah.
And it has specific things that you have to do almost on a daily basis to include spraying things and measuring trees, clearing water. And if you list, if you just look at the degree of intensity that has to be done for mitigation bank, it's, it would be way beyond our capabilities.
So, but as I was seeing there, talking to some people about the mitigation bank, apparently Eels is also looking at buying property that should not be used, could not be used for development. And they're looking at wetland areas to buy. So that's another option. And that may be a better option for us. I, I think our, our whole idea, at least, my take on it is that we would like to save some of the areas, the wetland areas, for our personal use. And that may be the way to do it. So it was interesting. It looked like a hard road.
It's good to hear it though.
But, and I tried to look at the stuff Scott sent over this afternoon, but I was on my phone and my eyes aren't that good. So I didn't, did not do that.
Now, there were a couple of areas that before Eels ran out of money, there's an area over by Publix on 50 that they've been, Publix had been trying to get Eels to buy. So there, there are options to have Eels purchase land and preserve it. So.
I would like to see them do it because I, I think it improves our water quality here in our city. And I think our citizens want to see some areas that are off limits to development. And I think development is coming our way and it's going to be really hard to start telling these people no.
Oh, it's, it's here.
I mean, you know, it's here.
It's here.
So as my dad used to say, one of these days, I won't be raising orange trees. I'm going to be raising, actually, he said Yankees, but we won't. He said we were, he would not be raising orange trees. He'd be raising Yankees. Sorry, guys. He was pretty, yeah, he was pretty, what would you call that?
Blunt.
Blunt? Yes, yes. So anyway, so we'll see how that works out.
Very nice, very nice. Thank you for that. I'll be very brief. I certainly have a, a lot of things on my calendar and mayor's report. I will tell you, there's always more things than are on there. And Ms. Virginia has a fit with me because I'll do two or three things. And I didn't know anything about that. A lot of times I just get a phone call and say, hey, can you come here? And we do that. One that wasn't on there and then I, I went and, and went to it was, as we all know, the Grove had the Denny's truck on, what night was that, City Manager?
Now, that was Thursday. Now, the Grove just allowed us to use their parking.
Okay, yeah, and I kind of sensed that. I didn't know that until I got there. But that's, yeah, it was fine. I appreciate it either way. And it was really exciting and the number of people, City Manager got there before I did and sent me a picture and it looked like like three hundred people in line and they served them in fifty minutes. And very impressive. It was three sixty, you told me, or?
Yeah, about three hundred and fifty. And we, and we talked to the coordinator for next year. They, they still want to come back.
Yeah, yeah, they said that.
And it's the, you know, for the police officers to ride from Miami to Daytona Beach. And he said that the success of that particular stop, that they're going to bring six hundred meals next year.
Wow, it was amazing. But then that turned into the next morning, I went down to the Tour de Force, Tour de Force, is that?
Tour de Force, yes.
Tour de Force. And that was the law enforcement, some retired, some active, were riding for those law enforcement people who had lost their lives in the past year. Vice Mayor and I went to, well, the first one I ever went to, it seemed like it was twenty twenty. It was twenty, twenty-one, twenty, anyways, a few years ago. Was it last year? We went over there with Harry Timor Center. Anyway. So I was just honored and privileged to speak to them as they left. And Chief spoke after me and mostly I simply said that, you know, I feel like you, I'm honored to be here, looking at heroes, writing for heroes. Because as I say to you guys all the time, the guys that run to the danger, the guy that run to the gunshot while the rest of us are running away from it, you're my hero. And those guys, I think they, they did appreciate Titusville hosting like we did. And I know a lot of people came out. We were out at City Hall and I called my wife down at Parish and they had some people come out at Parish. And gosh, those guys were so appreciative. So I just, that's kind of the highlight. I had a whole bunch of things we did, but the highlight was that. The other highlight is anytime I go to the League of Cities, Vice Mayor and I sit together and sometimes Member Stokel will visit us, sometimes she won't. Well, she, well, she's kind of big, big deal there. We're not. Anyway, Vice Mayor.
Yes. Yes. I, I did the, I was represented the mayor when I was, when Mr. Current spoke of the eleven things. That was me speaking on the behalf of the mayor. What he wanted to do at the Parks and Rec thing. I, I did a lot of transportation stuff. The planning organization, Department of Transportation, Space Coast, looking for ways to help us with four oh five. And it is, it is amazing, that process. A lot of money, ooh, lots of money, but a lot of problems throughout the state. And a lot of the problems are arising because of the influx of people into our state. And they're moving into a lot of what used to be called the rural areas of Florida. And those like, if you know anything about the West Coast, Highway nineteen that used to be a little bit over there and places like that. They are really having a lot of congestion in those areas. But it is still some things that I'm learning that if I get an opportunity to speak up for, as we grow here in Titusville, I will. And they're getting to know my face around the place. And they know that I will say something. Is that right? That's, that's about it for me.
I could have told him that, sir. Member Stokel, thank you. Whoa, I was just kidding around. You're really passing? All right, City Manager.
I do have one action item. The memorandum of agreement with Bivard County Mosquito Control is up. So I'm requesting that council grant me the authorization to sign the approval of the aerial treatment operations for mosquito control letter. And that will be for a three-year period.
And that would require us to vote. Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Got to talk about mosquitoes. Thank you, sir. Counsel? Member Nelson?
Um, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you got to put it back to. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
And I, I thought we were done, so.
Yeah, so did I. My bad. I should have paid more attention.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
Move to permit City Manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with Bivard County Mosquito Control.
Second.
Okay, I have motion for Member Nelson. Member Cole, did you say? Member Cole, second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes.
My second item and the, the remaining items are informational items. The April edition of the Titusville Talking Points are out. And I'm sure you can get Councilmember Stokel's signature on her Senator page.
Took them all. I'm sorry. Member Stokel.
How did she make the cover?
Well, now you know why she doesn't speak to us in League of Cities. She is pretty important there though.
When she said Titusville represented, that's the only time we get up to cheer.
Member Stokel, the questions come up. Why were you in DC?
Pass.
I don't have the answer to that one either. City Manager.
But of particular, no, we try to do a Senator story. And this particular one is the barbecue that's scheduled to open mid-May to the end of May. And it's over there by the new condos. It's the old Howard Johnson's. And I'll tell you, if you, if you read the article, it's really touching that Mr. Russell and his, and his wife of how they're approaching this business to give. Mr. Russell and his, and his wife of how they're approaching this business to give back to the community. And it, it's really, um, it makes you feel good.
Yes, it does.
Um, and, and his vision of, of how this, this barbecue will work. Plus, I, in my opinion, we need a good barbecue before we get a Chick-fil-A. I mean, I just, my, my personal.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other item I have is the meeting dates coming up and, uh, awards ceremony is coming up and of course graduations and the, uh, annual awards picnic is, uh, this Thursday.
Yeah, definitely.
And we are expecting rain.
Well, we'll get pavilion. Be an interesting tug of war.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, subject to your questions, Officer Cruz did want to use my road bike for the, the ride from Miami to Daytona, but he couldn't fit on the turf.
Okay, anything else, city attorney? You good? With that, meeting adjourned.